... vaccination for these diseases. In 2,654 deaths, nearly all of which were in children who never lived to see their third birthday. To say that there are no health problems related to the vaccine is an outright lie, yet this is the information that I would have to pay my doctor to tell me if LD-471 were to pass. In looking at the CDC data on the statistics for diphtheria, tetanus, and pertussis over the last 25 years, since the inception of the VAERS database, you will find that there have been only 291 reported deaths. 291 deaths instead of 291 dead people nonetheless. But, from these three diseases combined, in the last 25 years, nine times more Americans have died following vaccination for one or more of these three diseases than from the diseases those vaccines are supposed to prevent. Given the acknowledged underreporting to VAERS, I caution you to recognize that this number may be in fact significantly higher. And so here later from Representative Foley, his daughter, and countless others just like her are not included in the VAERS database because they didn't know it existed. What is perhaps even more startling than the CDC's own data is the fact that there is no existing medical condition at all under Maine law that is eligible for a medical exemption to the five DTAP vaccines that are mandated for children to attend public school. According to Chapter 261 of the Maine DHHS Rules Immunization Requirements for Schoolchildren, Section 3, Paragraph B, Medical Exemptions. A child must suffer an adverse reaction to a previous injection of pertussis, tetanus, or diphtheria to qualify for a medical exemption. If LD-606 were to pass, Maine law would require that I risk the very lives of my children in subjecting them to a DTAP vaccine before they would be eligible for the medical exemption that their pediatrician has already given them. Many of the children whose death reports are detailed in the VAERS database were healthy babies when they were carried into their pediatrician's office, injected with a DTAP vaccine, and were found dead in their crib as little as four hours later with blood coming out of their nostrils. These were SIDS deaths. There are risks to vaccination, and these risks are greater for some than for others. The CDC in 2009 acknowledged the connection between genetics and vaccine injury in the report Vaccine Safety and Human Genetic Variations. They appear to be launching into the research that is well underway in the scientific and medical communities, connecting single nucleotide polymorphisms with susceptibility to adverse vaccine reactions. The CDC paper has since been removed from the government's website, leaving parents like me to rely on the few doctors who stay up to date with medical literature and my right to philosophical exemption to protect my children. LD-606 would at the very least harm and possibly kill my children. LD-471 is a slap in the face to parents like me who have spent literally years researching vaccines. I am not ignorant, uneducated, misinformed, or swayed by celebrities. My children are healthy and thriving because of the educated choices that I make in consultation with their highly educated pediatrician. My children's lives are not worth any less than the immunocompromised child sitting next to them in class. Please oppose LD-606 and 471.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Tyson Shardlow of Auburn?
Well, good afternoon. Well, Senator Reiki, Representative Tean, the members of this council. Again, I thank you for allowing me to stand up here and speak. I must say, long day. It's not over yet. Well, you've heard a great deal of testimony today about the importance of herd immunity, but despite the fears of parents and public health issues who claim that unvaccinated people are a threat to the safety of others, even 100% vaccination rate cannot protect the most vulnerable among us because vaccine-induced herd immunity can never be breached. Let me explain. The idea of herd immunity is a theory based on a natural disease acquisition, recovery, and lifelong immunity conveyed from the natural disease process within a community. In the pre-vaccine era, when diseases like measles and chickenpox were accepted as a natural rapid passage, in fact, many people here have already had these diseases and been through the fine, most of the population contracted these diseases, overcame them, and enjoyed lifelong immunity. Because vaccines at best can only confer short-term immunity, and vaccine-induced immunity can vary greatly from person to person, mass vaccine campaigns often work well in the short term but leave people susceptible to disease just a few years later as their antibody levels decline. For example, I just have a hodgepodge of examples here where herd immunity didn't happen. And I want to just point out that all of these examples are cited through peer-reviewed literature or with the CDC's own website information, and we've made that available for your approval. CDC reported that in 1984 measles outbreak at an Illinois high school occurred among 100% vaccinated population. In 1987, the New England Journal of Medicine reported a measles outbreak at a school in Corpus Christi, Texas, with a 99% vaccination rate against measles, where 99% of students had proven immunity to the disease already. In 1994, from the Archives of Internal Medicine, a review of every English-language report of school-based measles outbreaks in the U.S. and Canada concluded, quote, "As measles immunization rates rise to high levels in population, measles becomes a disease of immunized persons." And that's what we're seeing today. Last year, while docked in San Diego, 25 with 102 crew members of the USS Arden became infected with influenza despite a 99% influenza vaccination rate on the ship. Just a couple more here. Two months ago, 19 students in Summit County, Utah were diagnosed with pertussis. All 19 students had been vaccinated. Also, this March, just a little while ago, in Salinas, California, there was a pertussis outbreak in a school where 99.5% of students had been vaccinated, including everyone infected children. Despite unvaccinated children being blamed for disease outbreaks, the truth is that outbreaks among vaccinated populations are due to vaccine failure, not a failure to vaccinate. To prove this, we need only to look at the explosion in the CDC's vaccine schedule as more and more vaccines are added to combat the problem of vaccine failure. For example, since the first five doses of pertussis don't provide adequate protection, we now have two additional pertussis vaccinations added to the schedule, plus another pertussis vaccine for women in every pregnancy, and pertussis vaccines for healthcare and daycare providers. In the 1980s, children received one MMR injection at 15 months, and because of the failure of MMR vaccination, there was now an additional MMR injection required for children, plus the recommendation of one or two doses for adults. If you have not received all the recommended booster shots on the CDC's adult immunization schedule, then you are technically unvaccinated. As you might question your own risk, the immunocompromised among us consider this, please. Do we really have an increasing number of philosophical exemptions in Maine? The data that the Maine CDC provided for you, which I believe you have, provided for the 2011, 12, 2012, and 13, and 2013, 14 school years is available in links in the handout that you have. A look at this data shows that the number of exemptions from vaccination in Maine increased by 1.6% overall between the 2011, 12, and the 2013, 14 school years. In that same time period, the CDC reduced the data that they used in the report from 97% of kindergarteners in 2011, 12 to just 82.4% in 2013, 14. While if a 1.6% overall increase in exemptions is so troubling, why would the Maine CDC omit nearly 15% of the data used in this report? Or did they omit the data in the counties and districts with the highest vaccination rate to skew the results and push this legislation forward? In closing, I actually can carefully consider whether we actually do have a vaccine exemption problem in Maine, and if attempting to increase vaccination rates by removing philosophical exemption is really going to make our state a healthier state. Please oppose LD-606 and LD-471.
Thank you very much. Representative Basham?
Thank you for being here. I didn't see up here what your profession is. Would you be so kind to tell me?
Well, I do have a doctorate education characteristic.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. I did forget, the two people who volunteered to let other people go in their slot in the last go-around, if their peer want to give them an opportunity to go now. Jessica, oh, so?
Just so, desol.
All right. Well, sorry for butchering the last name.
Good afternoon, Senator Reiki, Representative Tean, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Jessica Dusel, and I am a registered nurse from Sonora, Maine. I believe vaccines are important. However, I oppose LD-471 and LD-606. In 2011, when my daughter was 14, I consented to the Gardasil vaccine. She didn't want it, but I explained to her that it would protect her from cervical cancer. As a nurse, I have cared for people with terminal cervical cancer. My understanding of serious side effects from a vaccine was immediate, allergic type, and anaphylaxis. These reactions are extremely rare, nothing I was concerned about. I give vaccines in my nursing practice. I was fully vaccinated myself, and all my four children were fully vaccinated. Prior to this vaccine, my daughter was in her usual state of health without ever having hives or joint pain before. She was a serious student who rarely missed school. My daughter was administered two Gardasil vaccines before I had serious concerns. A few weeks after the first shot, she developed a blistering rash. We told the provider Gardasil was the only thing different. Her provider denied Gardasil could cause the blistering rash, the rash did go away. After the second vaccine, she developed hives that were chronic for two months. My daughter and I told her provider that the only thing that was different was the Gardasil shot. Our provider said my daughter was allergic to something, it was not Gardasil. He referred us to an immunologist who ordered skin tests and blood tests, and he reviewed all those and brought us back into his office, and she wasn't allergic to anything, that Gardasil was not causing her hives. He told us she had chronic urticaria. He administered the third shot. I'd just like to say, I really didn't know at the time that there was no test that could confirm or point him in any sort of direction, but I have learned since that there is not. Two weeks after the third shot, the hives were itching became so intense she could not sleep. She woke me up at night, covered in hives. She developed wheels on her hands and feet. They had purple centers, they were painful. She had severe pain in her knees, fingers, toes. She was limping up the stairs. She had persistent headache, waves of nausea. She was vomiting, dizzy, fatigued. She missed 20 days of school within the first few months after the shot, at one-hour visit. She had a giant hive from her shoulders to her waist. I took pictures, I got a lawyer. I learned I was not allowed to hold anyone accountable. That is, a typo says 1989, but of course it was 1986 Vaccine Act. I was not able to take her doctor's court or to sue the pharmaceutical company. My daughter had major severe itching and pain for 75% of the time, for at least a year after the third shot. She went to school many days with her arms double their natural size, uncomfortable itching and pain, and histamines did not help. Steroids helped temporarily and gave negative side effects. She still has hives every day, although her symptoms have improved with time. We filed a claim of a vaccine injury compensation program. We testified in Washington, D.C. in March 2014. A year later, we still have not heard a decision in her case. All my children have mild fourth of autoimmunities such as mild asthma and mild eczema. My youngest son is the least vaccinated of my children and shows the least signs of autoimmunity. I have been assigning a philosophical exemption for my youngest son for the last two years. I am not allowed a medical exemption for my son, even though my daughter had a severe vaccine reaction that she has not recovered from. I cannot afford not to work, to homeschool my kids, but I do keep them home when they are sick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions? Thank you for your testimony and for sharing your story. Carol Foyle?
Good afternoon, Senator Reiki, Representative Tean, thank you. Members of the committee on Health and Human Services, my name is Megan Shoney. Carol had to...
Sorry, I think I got it wrong.
Yes. So Maine residents have a right to choose what substances go into their children and their personal bodies. In addition, we have the right established by common law to refuse medical treatment if the person is mentally competent. The definition of mentally competent in the context of refusing medical treatment means that the patient can understand the risk and benefits of the proposed treatment, and the patient is able to make an informed choice. These two proposed bills would take away that right. I personally have spent hundreds of hours researching both sides of vaccines. On top of my medical training at Northwestern Health Sciences University, I have read books, watched movies, I even listened to continuing education lectures put on by pro-vaccine companies for pediatricians. And I feel that with all of that, I can make my own choice. I have the right to refuse treatment if I understand the risk and benefits of that proposed treatment. The bill LD-606 is to strip our philosophical exemption. Philosophical exemption is often thought of as a taboo because mothers and fathers can object to vaccine schedule for their own purpose and do not have the religious to religiously object. It is thought of as an easy way out for vaccine supporters. It is hard to talk about philosophy, the meaning of it, and the value of it. What should not be overlooked, however, is the importance of philosophy to our country. Religious freedom is what drove pilgrims to America originally, but it was the philosophy of freedom and the philosophy of justice that our founding fathers fought for and what has turned us into America, not religion. You must be able to appreciate what this bill LD-471 is. It is proposing an additional burden infringing on our rights. The bills can be written so soft so that they appear to have a low impact during the voting process. After the bill is voted through, a gate is opened that was a progression in their plan of taking away our choice. This bill may seem like a good compromise at this time, but is already proving to be challenging in states where it was voted through. It is hard to find doctors to sign off and is looked down upon for doctors to sign. The states such as California, who voted the bill to have doctors sign off, then molded it to complete eradication of philosophical and religious exemption. Please do not make your decision on that bill without deep consideration. Voting that bill through could be just as detrimental as taking our philosophical exemption away. We all know the official purpose of this bill, but we must appreciate there is also a pretext to less virtuous aims of the pharmaceutical companies such as increase in vaccine sales. These two bills are being brought forth to increase the number of people to be vaccinated. Instead of taking our rights away as citizens to accomplish this goal, this effort and money should be put towards making the vaccines more safe and taking harmful ingredients out, therefore accomplishing an increase in vaccinated population without taking away our choice. Men die for our freedom, and it is the corruption of money that causes freedom to go away. The pharmaceutical companies are in the pockets of every single state government. It is this corruption that has brought us together and disguises the true democracy in this hall today. I am asking you to think about our rights as Americans as you make the decision. When you naturally contract measles, you have lifelong immunity. Vaccines do not offer lifelong immunity. They admit that. My grandmother had measles. She has 75 years of immunity built up. She passed that immunity on to her four children while she was breastfeeding, keeping them immune while they were infants. My mother was vaccinated against measles. She has no immunity left in her body. She gave no immunity to me while breastfeeding and is more of a threat today than my grandmother is. If these bills were all about immunity, not about making pharmaceutical companies more money, then tetanus would not be on the list of mandatory vaccines. Tetanus is contracted from a spore in the environment and cannot be spread from one person to the next. Forcing a child to get the tetanus vaccine should have no impact on our public health because it is not to prevent the spread of disease, yet it is still on the mandatory list.
All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions? Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Betty Grant Wyden?
Betty's in North Carolina, so keep her there, she's got...
Okay, well, I'm just gonna...I don't want to get into the practice of we're all substituting everyone all around. I think that gets really messy, so I'm just gonna go on to the next person if someone... Is Brian Violet here? I know Brian, oh, there it is. All right.
Thank you, Senator Reiki, and thank you to the committee for allowing me to speak. I wanted to prepare some...wanted to have a prepared statement, but I didn't really prepare anything, so I'm just gonna kind of go off the head here. Basically, I'm opposing both bills.
Could you make sure to introduce yourself to those might be...
My name's Brian Violet. I'm from Caribou, Maine. I'm a physical therapist assistant and massage therapist. So I'm just basically here today to kind of change a little bit of the myths here. There's a lot of harmful chemicals in vaccinations that are not just thermosol. For instance, there's bovine cow serum extracted from cow skin. When injected, it can cause connective tissue disorders, arthritis, lupus, shortness of breath, low blood pressure, chest pain, skin reactions. There's also sorbitol. It's a synthetic sweetener. It metabolizes slowly, and it aggravates some irritable bowel syndrome and gastrointestinal issues. Gelatin, which is derived from the collagen inside of animal skins and bones. It's injected and opposes a risk of infection from synthetic growth hormones. Sodium chloride, which is known to raise the blood pressure and inhibit muscle contraction and growth. Egg proteins, we know about that. Thermosol is widely talked about, too. Human albumin, which is a certain protein in the blood pooled from a human penis plasma. So when injected, it can cause fevers, chills, rashes, hives, headaches, nausea, difficulty breathing, rapid heart rate. The formaldehyde is also put in a lot of vaccines. And basically, if the formaldehyde wasn't put in the vaccines, the vaccine itself would kill you, so that's kind of why they put it in there, but it's really not good for you. I mean, you look any of this stuff up. MSG, aluminum, aluminum is a big one because most of the vaccines are now...they're using aluminum more because thermosol is linked with de-autism. And there's 90 separate studies that show a link between vaccinations and autism. To suggest there aren't any studies is just false. Aluminum toxicity is pretty well-known. It's well-known that aluminum causes things like Alzheimer's, ALS, linked to, you know, a lot of separate things. Because aluminum is widely recognized neurotoxin, and it inhibits more than 200 biologically important functions. It causes various adverse effects in plants, humans, and animals. We know aluminum can cause renal failure, bone disease, osteomalacia, brain damage, Alzheimer's, ALS, attacks of CNS, Parkinson's disease, affects hematopoiesis. It induces mitocytic anemia, sorry, anemia through the humans' synthesis, decreases globulin synthesis, increases homeolysis, it reduces iron absorption. Basically, when aluminum thermosol, when they're mixed together, it lowers your ability of body to create glutathione, which is very important. Glutathione is one of four antioxidants in your body. And basically, we're just...we need to stop giving neurotoxins to our kids, and to suggest that we may need that kids be injected with neurotoxins is not even comprehensible to me.
Thank you, Mr. Violet.
So thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And is there a deadline that I could provide written testimony?
You can provide, I guess, any time of people's eligibility, so...
Because I'll probably email you guys with some graphs that show the vaccination rates. When the vaccines were introduced, the diseases were already on their way down, and there's plenty of charts that show that, so I want to...
Please feel free to, our committee clerk, you can get her email address, we'll email her, and we'll all get it.
Okay. And we'll take any questions if there are...
Any questions for Mr. Violet? Seeing no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. I know it's a long way from Mersey County.
Thank you.
Chris Thebridge?
Yes, hello, Senator Reiki, and the Health and Human Services Committee. Anyways, Christopher Sidious, I'm from Van Dern. I'm just a student at UMK, no fancy organization or nothing, but a concerned citizen at the least. I'm here to speak on behalf of some people I can be here from up north. I'm against both bills. The idea of increasing the number of vaccinations with the information that's out, knowing that what's in there already, I feel is incomprehensible. But people have been talking about thimerosal and whatnot being in there, and mercury. But there's also aluminum as well, and there's so many other things. I have a list right here from the CDC itself saying what's in each vaccination for whatever the vaccine is for. If you read the list, I mean, whether it's aluminum, thimerosal, lead, mercury, whatever it is, all the other ingredients in there don't really look to appealing as well. It's not...I mean, that's the thing, as a kid, I got a lot of vaccinations thinking that they were good for me, but no one...if they would have shown me this list here, I probably wouldn't have taken it, and my parents probably wouldn't have loved it. So with all the information coming out, the dangers and everything from vaccinations, I think that it probably would not be the smartest idea to want to increase the rates for them. There's a lot of special interests involved in all this. Let's not kid ourselves, the health industry is a billion, billion-dollar industry. Every vaccine that's sold is money towards the...for the drug companies, whether the state's paying for it, the family's paying for it, or the hospital, they get paid in the end, it doesn't matter. It's just, I don't...I mean, if you look, for example, people have been talking about is there a correlation between autism and vaccines? It's hard to pinpoint whether or not there is, whether there's truth to that. I don't have much information with me, I kind of came out here on the whim, but if you look at the Amish, for example, there are really not too many Amish that are vaccinated that are obviously for religious purposes and suffer against it. But there was also very, very low cases of autism within the Amish. People argue always because of the way they live, they eat healthier and stuff like that. I know people who are famous, eat organic, non-GMO, get vaccines, and there's still problems. So you can't really go by that. And not just that, I mean, America, United States of America is the most vaccinated country in the world, if I'm correct. I'm pretty positive about that. And we have a lot of health issues. I mean, we're talking a lot about autism, but I mean, what about SIDS? You know, we don't know where that comes from. I mean, we talk about Mississippi, the highest vaccinated state in the country, and I also believe that they also have the highest SIDS rate as well. But that's a whole different topic, but it's something to definitely take into consideration that there might be more problems coming from the vaccines than we think. And I'm not anti-vaccine, I just believe that we should be aware of what's in them, and there shouldn't be anything in there, especially neurotoxins for one. If you want to try to make communities healthier and whatnot, I mean, you can start by taking oligarchy out of it. But I just feel, in 1989, when they increased the amount of vaccinations, the number of autism cases rose, almost in correlation with that increase. So again, you can't pinpoint say that's a cause of it, but I mean, I have a saying, two plus two equals four. You can go from that, you know, just use your own common sense. But you have to understand, too, the bigger players in this are the big head honchos in the suits like Robert Kennedy, when you're talking about, they make their phone calls after they want to take out, put out a drug, you know, it's all insider information. American Pfizer are publicly traded corporations, they're on Wall Street, in the stock market, what is their legal obligation? They got one. Their one legal obligation is to increase profits for their shareholders. How do you do that? You don't do that by finding cures. You do that by increasing the number of vaccinations for people, that's more money in the pocket. It's all about the money, it's big money. Not to say that they don't care. A lot of people care. Hospitals care, physicians care, doctors care. I'm talking about the people at the top of the tier, the ones that are making the big time money. You have to ask yourselves if they care. The fact that the CDC is under investigation by the Supreme Court, I mean, you know, it's my time, though. Anyways, just from the CDC.
Thank you, Mr. Violet.
Yeah, just information, so. May I at least send in any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for coming down here.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think from up north, about our job. David Whitney?
Good afternoon, and thank you all for your time. I'm sure every day is a long day for you folks, a lot of... My name is David Whitney. My profession is that of entrepreneur. I own a series of businesses in the Machias area, including Whitney Reef, Whitney's Blueberries, Whitney's Trittown Marine, Whitney's Tool Shed, and Machias Glassworks. Additionally, I coach soccer and baseball for youth in our area, which includes our children. My wife and I have three children, including our son Ashton, who was diagnosed with Autism Spectrum Disorder. I am completely, mostly vaccinated. I did not get a flu shot this year. My wife is completely vaccinated. She might not have gotten a flu shot this year. Our children were all completely vaccinated by the recommendations, by the schedule, with the exception of Ashton after...we saw the point. I'm gonna let my wife get into those details, but we saw when he was injured. And we know, we know that we believe that his autism disorder was caused by one particular vaccination. I am not an anti-vaxer at all. What makes my testimony unique is another position that I hold. Since 2010, I have been a member of the Board of Trustees of Down East Community Hospital. Starting in 2013, I... Starting in 2013, I became Chair of the Quality Assurance Committee. Since June of 2014, I serve as Chairman of the Board of Trustees. A core part of the hospital's business is to actively promote vaccinations, both for employees and the community at large. I am not overly verbose about my suspicions of the link between my child's autism and a vaccination that he received. In my role of governance at Down East Community Hospital, I don't feel the need to voice those concerns because I am comforted by the freedom of choice that consumers currently have as it relates to vaccines. Abraham Lincoln once said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves." Please don't take away the people's right to choose whether to vaccinate themselves or their children. Please allow each and every citizen the freedom to make good decisions and the freedom to make bad decisions. For the sake of freedom, I am strongly opposed to LD 606 and LD 471. I implore you to vote against both of these bills. Thank you again for your time and consideration. This is vitally important.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any questions? Representative Stucky.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I've been scratching my head for a while now, trying to understand how LD 471 takes away your freedom to.
Chips away.
If you like.
It chips away at freedom.
Chips away?
It chips away at freedom.
How does it do that?
It chips away at freedom. I want to make sure that every person has every right to choose however they want, with the education that they have and the questions that they ask, to choose whether or not to vaccinate themselves or their children.
And it doesn't, don't you have that right? After you have a conversation, don't you still have that right?
I don't want for any person to be obligated to have any further conversation if they make that choice.
To not, I don't understand. The challenge is, I mean, because I agree with a lot of what I've heard this morning and this afternoon about the profiteering and, you know, who are the good guys and who are the bad guys. It seems to me that the future of improving health in our country depends on the quality of the relationship between we, the people, and our doctors. And certainly, the people that I've heard in this room today are incredibly articulate in what their beliefs and their knowledge base is. And to engage in a conversation with your pediatrician or your doctors about that, I think would be in the huge public interest in terms of restoring the decision-making about healthcare in this country to the relationship between the doctor and the patient. And I kind of see that as maybe the only way. I mean, I don't think we're ever going to convince Big Pharma to have the concerns that you and I are talking about.
I believe that a doctor and a patient should engage in that conversation as freely as they want to. And I don't think that it should be legislated. I don't believe that a patient should be legislated, that you have to talk to your doctor about anything. A child, a person has a right to not go to a doctor if they don't want to. And I think it's, I think it's in a person's best interest to go to a doctor, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push that on you. That's your choice. You know, I choose, I choose not to drink alcohol. I choose not to smoke cigarettes, but it's my choice. And I went into the bathroom here a little while ago, and I noticed that they have these toilet seat liners. You seen those in the bathroom, right? It might be a good idea for me to use one of those toilet seat liners, either for myself or for the next person, but you know, don't tell me I have to. It also might be a good idea for me to wash my hands after I'm done, but don't tell me I have, please, please. It is my choice whether or not I want to put a toilet seat liner on or wash my hands, and I just, I want that freedom to make that choice.
If I work in a restaurant and I'm gonna serve you food, and I go to the bathroom, do you want me to wash my hands?
I think that's probably a good idea. I think that's probably a good idea, but as an individual, I think if I walk into the bathroom, I'd have to be able to have that choice.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. So, you know, you're, we talked about these four different ideas of autonomy, doing good, doing no harm, and justice. So you're talking about the autonomy part, but I'm gonna ask you to slide your thinking over to the justice part with the greatest good for the greatest number of people. You know, your ability to put your fist out stops it, my nose, and so there is a very strong argument about the justice issue of people who want, so I would appreciate your talking about that.
Sure. You know, I would yield to the answer that Mary Holland gave to that same exact question. I thought her answer was perfect, and I would not profess to be the smartest person in the room. I mean, it might be my wife who's gonna speak next, but I'm not, and I love the answer that she gave, and I think it's on record, so I'll yield to her answer to that question. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Thank you.
Does it temper your answer?
No, I thought.